Hi Mike.
Hello.
Roberta.
Yes, indeed, I see you.
Okay, I see Gary.
Good evening.
Well, they're all either fashionably late or having difficulty getting on.
I don't think Julie or Carmen could make it. I think they sent emails around.
All ready. Then one, two, three, four, five. So we have sufficient enough for four of them. So I'll call the meeting to order at six forty-six. And roll call. So myself, Michael Morelli, Roberto Lewandowski, Hillary Evans, Gary Paul, Molly Jacobs, Mary McGrathen. And there's another.
I'm here, Megan's here.
Megan's here, geez. I'm sorry.
That's all right. I can't figure out how to like see everybody, so.
Uh, I don't know, I hit a bunch of funny little things at the top.
Go in the upper right, yeah, you should be able to check.
You'll see it says floating panel view.
I'll find out.
Well, when I was at the land use meeting the other night, I was pressing all these buttons and all kinds of things. You know. All ready. Review and approval of the prime meeting minutes. Conservation Commission's special meeting of the eleventh of August, 2020. Has everyone read it? Is there any corrections, changes? None? All ready, I'll make a motion that we accept the minutes as written. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Everybody shows aye. Aye, myself, all ready. Second item, Conservation Commission's special meeting of the eighth of September, 2020. Has anybody had, has everybody had the opportunity to review that one? Is there any corrections, changes, anything of that nature? No? All ready, then I make a motion that we accept the minutes based September 2020. Have a second?
Second.
All ready. All ready, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, okay. Seven ayes, none opposed.
Um, is someone taking notes?
I'm gonna hope that Julie's gonna review this thing and. Or is someone, do we need now, Mary, or she?
Who is, who is Christina? It says Christina is the host.
Christina is the host, yes, Christina works in the. Uh, town hall. Nicole, you please.
She's probably take, is taking the minutes.
Aye. Can I unmute her? Christina? Can you unmute yourself?
Because usually if you have staff, they would be taking the minutes for you. And that's why Christina, and she's the host.
Correct.
Okay.
Yes, I was informed that she was going to be the host. Nicole, that usually does it with us, wasn't able to get hooked up in time. And she informed me that Christina would be doing.
Okay.
Okay, be the host. All ready. Correspondences. Eastern Connecticut Conservation District, Eastern Connecticut Conservation District, just their. Summer edition of their newsletter. Came out there. The other one is from. Connecticut Land Conservation Council, its registration is open. It's called Connecting the Dots and Taking Action. October seventeenth, 2020, an online gathering for Connecticut's land conservation community. Uh, they have different keynote speakers. I guess, you know, it's right, it's a webinar. I guess you're all, you have to register. If there's anybody that's interested in it, give me an email, I can send along the address. The, uh, the address for it. All ready? Come here, dummy. It's my dog. All righty, we have a number of letters from the mail. We have a letter. Reappointing Gary Paul. As commissioner. We have another one, Molly Jacobs as an alternate. Ms. Reed, reappointed. Mrs. Lewandowski, reappointed. And Julie, reappointed. All righty. All righty, next would be public comments. I see there's someone else online here. Karen? Is it possible the host can unmute her? I can't do it.
Can Karen unmute herself?
Yes, she does, but I don't think she knows how, I just try.
I'm here.
And we also have another gentleman over here, Ms. Olson.
Yes, I'm Tom Olson. I'm here, two hats, one is the commissioner from the Groton Conservation Commission. I'd like to thank your, your group here for the great comments that you provided to our draft conservation, open space and conservation plan. Update that we submitted to you for comments, and we do look forward to working with you in the future. As you requested. Just for information, we did receive a number of comments from our various departments within the town of Groton. We're working through those right now, we've got multiple pages of comments and stuff. We're not seeing anything that's gonna significantly change it, a lot of technical issues that we're resolving. But I just wanted to let you give a thanks to you and shout out for all the great work and taking a look at our plan. Secondly, I'm here with the tri-town trail and with Karen, all relative to, for support on any issues or questions you have relative to the trail. Thank you.
All ready, so I see the Karen, that'd be Karen Parkinson?
Yes, yes.
Yes, oh, good evening.
Good evening.
Is there anything you'd like to say, or you're just looking for comments from us?
Um, at the land use meeting, um, the, um. Okay, that's easy, at the land, oops, where'd it go? Um. Where'd I go? Did I just lose you?
No.
Oh, no.
Okay, I just lost, just lost my video. At the land use meeting the other night, the, um. Uh, we had a long discussion, Mark was on there too, but the mayor was going to speak to Parks and Recs about us coming under Parks and Recs. I had a brief conversation with Scott from Parks and Recs today, he said the mayor was going to. Approach the Conservation Commission this evening about your feelings about. Where we, the tri-town trails should come under. Um, so I'm viewing in tonight to see, um, what that's, what's gonna happen. We, for many, many months ago, we, we presented to the town council that we felt we really needed, needed to be under some. Town commission or establish an ad hoc committee or something so we could. Get all our questions, day by day questions answered in expedient fashion. And as yet, we haven't got that, been assigned to anybody. Um, so I think land use was comfortable with us going under Parks and Recs or maybe conservation. Um, I think we finally got it clarified at the land use committee that the tri-town trail with our corporation papers. We, we're, we're not the type of 501(c)(3) that owns things. Avalonia is a land conservation organization, and they, within their corporate papers, they buy and own property. Within our corporation papers, that's not what we're about. We're about advocating, facilitating, fundraising, making something happen, but we're not owners. So, um, and Groton Parks and Recs are gonna, are working on the Groton park to be under Parks and Rec. We have Preston also, but Preston is just a trailhead at the Preston Park, that's their contribution. We really want Ledger to take, take ownership of their park. So, um, I'll wait and see what other discussion happens later on. Thank you.
Karen, it's Mary. I was at that meeting, and I was under the impression that the mayor was going to talk to Scott Johnson the next day. And see if Parks and Rec would be willing to, I'll say, take ownership of you, whatever happened.
They didn't have a conversation till late this afternoon.
Oh, okay.
Okay, that was the first time they talked, it was late this afternoon, so the mayor was away and I guess it didn't happen the next day.
Okay.
Okay.
Uh, yes, Mike Morelli, I was also at the meeting there, that meeting too, and that's, you know, until. We find out what their conversation, how it came about. Uh, I would not commit us, Conservation Commission, as of yet, to, uh, running, to, like you say, being connected with us. Because I know some of the things that they brought up were, they would like somebody on the town hall staff. They're actually staff, whereas we are all volunteers, and they thought that that would be, you know, uh. You know, more appropriate and probably more effective and better for everyone. So as of this time here, I'm not, we, you know, this is, that was under my impression he speaks to Parks and Rec, and I have not heard any word from them. So I don't know if it's a little premature for us to discuss it this evening.
Okay.
Let me see, I see someone else has come in, Beatrice Reynolds. Can you unmute yourself? I'm unable to unmute.
You wanted me to identify myself?
Oh, I just, yes, I know if you had any comments.
No, not at this point.
Not at this point, all ready. All ready. Is there any more discussions or questions for, uh, Karen?
Nope, B. Reynolds is actually a member of our, our board, so that's why she clicked in.
Oh, all righty, that's fine, that's fine. Uh. If I may, I can move on to the next item, the informational items. One of the informational items I was going to, you know, relate to the commission was that, yes, I had written back to the town of Groton with comments. And Mr. Olson this evening here has said they were appreciated, well, I thank you. So, yeah, it was the, uh. It would seem to be a lot of areas mutual. Uh, I don't think concern is the correct word, but a lot of them, uh, some ideas I think we could work together and collaborate on. Other informational items, the. I've been assigned to the agricultural commission. That does not mean I'll be slacking off here. All ready. That's the head question. All righty, had the other thing was a subject I wanted to inform everybody this evening. That Karen had already brought up, was that land use and the mayor were going to be speaking to. Parks and Rec, concerning is having Parks and Rec their point person to work with the town. To kind of smooth the process for that, for tri-town trail. Uh, so I've been in contact with Parks and Rec, they're ordering signs. For. Because of the leach ordinance, that they're gonna be posting signs at their properties. We would probably only going to be, if we do allow, there's probably only two properties we're going to allow. Leash-free areas, it'd be two that are not going to be, so I ordered two signs from him also. That would, so they all are uniform throughout the town. He's gonna get back to me eventually with the cost and everything else like that. All ready? That's Parks and Rec signs. All ready. Let me see, something for us to keep in mind is I understand that building permits, there's been an uptick in the town. So there may be more subdivisions going into the future, that seems to be. Uh, something that may be on the horizon. Let me see, what else have we got here? I really don't have anything else to ring anybody up to date on anything, does anybody have anything? Oh, Roberta.
Yeah.
Did you get any figures on what we have?
Sent you an email with the report Marsha sent me.
Really? Could you resend it? I don't know if I could, or could you give me a brief outline of what we have now?
Yes, I can read to you what I have, uh, but I will resend it. Do you want me to send it to everybody?
Yeah, sure, I did, yeah.
Okay, the other thing, since you didn't get it, Marsha also included. A rather extensive, uh, commentary on before we submit bills for anything, we have to submit. Uh, we have to request purchase orders be created.
Right.
So when I gave, um, when I took the bill to the town hall that you sent me. They were not happy that there was not a purchase order already in place. So, we have to create some kind of a system to, um, get the purchase orders done before we submit the bill.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay.
We can talk about how we want to do that, but that was Marsha Hancock's request.
Okay.
And I'll forward that to you along with the financial report. Um, based, uh, the. Budget at this time for the trail maintenance. One thousand four hundred and twenty-five was added to the trail maintenance as. Uh, left from the general fund budget surplus. So the total in the trail maintenance portion of our accounts is four thousand seven hundred and fifteen dollars and nineteen cents.
All ready.
The total budget for. Twenty, twenty and twenty twenty-one, which will take us through next June. The money we have in that total budget is three thousand five seventy-five.
Is that, that, but that was, okay, but we still, have we paid, uh, C-COG?
Nothing, nothing shows out of any account right now.
Okay.
And that was submitted, um, before the September meeting, I took that. Only knowing that the mayor had paid it, and we, they were just going to rearrange funds from whatever. Place he took it from and take it from us. To reimburse wherever it came out of, so they've been paid, but it hasn't come out of our accounts yet.
Okay. All right, I just wanted to get a rough figure because I'm in a conversation with a local carpenter.
Yeah.
And he's working up an estimate now for a bog bridge on Burton Road, on Burton Trail. So I just wanted to know what a negotiating position could be.
Yeah. I, I don't know, maybe I can go back and. Recreate my request to transfer it from some budget the mayor used to us, and see how I can. Move that along, but it can't be this week because Marsha Hancock's on vacation, so. It'll be a week or so before anything will happen at the earliest.
Yep, okay.
Okay.
Yep.
And I will forward that email to you again.
Okay, old business, property walks, has anyone done any property walks? Yes, Molly?
Yeah, I was, um. Watched around in Pine Swamp. Recently, and that was, it was, uh, the water levels are so low, I've never seen them so low. Um. But I mean, everything looked great, I can't really comment on how the bridges are holding up, because I walked right along past, you know, there was no need for them. But, uh, and we didn't quite get, I agree with me, we, we stopped at the, I don't know if there's another word for those, the boulders up above the water, but, um. We didn't get further than that, we called them the dragon caves, we had to stop there, but, um, and let's see, where else have I gone? The, the Pequot Trail, the portion of the Pequot Trail, I know we put that on our map, but that's, we don't report it on that at all, right?
No, that's not on.
Yeah.
Neither is the Pine Swamp, but that's nice to know anyways.
My comment on that would be if the Pine Swamp is so dry, it's probably the perfect time to do a bog bridge, because it'll be dry to work.
Yeah.
Yeah, like my, my daughter was wading out to the middle of those little, those shallow ponds, because there were. Yeah, like my, my daughter was wading out to the middle of those little, those shallow ponds because there were islands, there are islands there now because the water levels are so low. I've been noticing that everywhere. Oh, Glacier, we walked through Glacier as well. That seemed like it was in pretty good shape.
All right, I've been down on Burton with the gentleman I was speaking with who said that we may have to build the bog bridges and Burton Trail looks fine. There's, you know, it's a lot of leaves, that's it. Gary and I have been continuing working up there in Whitehall. And I think I've cleared enough enoughs where I may try to get Tim Spanos and his brush hog to take care of the upper meadows. So I think we've cleared enough trails and stuff so he can get his tractor up there. So that, that trail's looking fairly decent. I'll probably be contacting him sometime this week, see if he can do it.
I don't believe that we've ever created purchase orders for money out of the Whitehall Trust, but I will check on that. Those bills have always been submitted not through us, but directly to the town hall.
Okay. Alrighty. Next item is trail blazes, the LCC maintained trails. Who has the stencils? You've got them?
Yes, this is Megan. I have the stencils.
Can you get them to me?
Yeah, we can coordinate a exchange.
I'll try to, I'll try to hit some of them while the weather's still fairly decent. Alrighty. But other than that, we haven't, we haven't blazed anything else that we.
The last thing we blazed was the yellow one-way trail on, was the yellow trail going one way on Burton?
Yes, and that's the one I'm thinking about because when I went up there with that gentleman and on our way back, we got lost. We went off the trail because all the leaves are on there. You can't see what the floor was, and then we, oh, wait a minute, we're not going the right way. So, yes.
On the yellow trail?
On the yellow, on the return trip, yes.
All right. Yeah, if you want to send me an email, then we can like work out a time.
Alrighty, okay. Alrighty. Trail maps. Can this possibly be the last time we speak about them?
Yeah, I need to ping Liz because I still don't have the JPEG versions that would be going into like a Parks and Rec booklet. So that's, that's my bad. Let me ping Liz on that. But, yeah, I mean, it's, it's, it's done. It's all paid for. Any, you know, and she already finished her time with the project, and so she said, you know, anything else, like, you know, we're already out of time, you know, so so it's just getting those JPEGs from her. So I need to revisit that.
Alrighty. I think also the Tri-Town Trail had been interested. I'm trying to remember how this went. I think it was the, all right, now the Tri-Town Trail was interested in having their map that they've got put on ours. And I think at the time, because ours are completed and we couldn't put it on, it was recommended that they send it over to the Hike Ledger program. The Hike Ledger program. So I believe that they are going to be sending it over there. So it'll be part of that also on that, I guess, that website.
Do you mean the like list of lead your trails on the website? Or what do you mean?
Right.
You mean just like?
Website, the project we just completed.
Yes.
All right, it's too late to add their trails to that.
Well, I mean, it's, it's not that difficult. I mean, if I understand what you're think, what you're saying, are you saying to just like, because do they, they already have a map, right?
I believe so. Last Karen.
And feel free to weigh in, those of you who are from Tri-Town.
Yes, we have a, we have a map.
Okay, so there is a section of the Lead Your Town website, Lead Your Trail Maps. And so we can very easily take the map that you have and put it on that page, put a link to to your map. And if you, so that we just have to ask Regina to do that, and so since it's under the Conservation Commission portion of the website, if you want to send me like a PDF or JPEG version of the map, actually probably PDF, I think all the other maps on there are PDF. So if you could send me a PDF and then I can have Regina upload it, that way it will be included in the list of Lead Your Trails map. Could, could one of you do that?
Yes, we can do that. Thank you.
All right. Can I give you my email address? Or may, I may, I might be able to chat it to you. Hold on. Was that Karen Parkinson talking?
Yes.
All right. All right, Karen, I will chat you my email address, okay? Let me know if you don't.
Okay. Yep, got it.
All right.
Alrighty. All right, next. On the list was the agenda was signage at Burton Trail. Megan, did you have any, anything on it?
So I sent you an email and Tony Sebilia, did you see that?
No, I did not.
All right. All right, I will, I'll resend it. So I sent you what I had and I, I thought I had connected you and Tony, but I'll have to connect it again. Just giving, I gave you and Tony the, like the Burton Trail map, which is what he needs to make a trail sign out of it.
Right.
So.
Okay. Alrighty. Alrighty. Next on the agenda is the Hike Ledger program. And I guess, Megan, you saw the email from Nicole. And so they're making up the PO, purchase order to pay for the designer of the patches.
I did not see the email from Nicole, actually. But that's good to know.
Anyways, I did. I saw it about thirty, forty minutes ago. I looked and I saw it was sent.
Okay. Okay, got it.
Okay. So just to bring everybody up to date on that, it's, it's, it's working through the process. They will get paid pretty soon. Alrighty. The next one is the off-leash trails.
Oh, sorry, Mike, before we move on, can I make a comment about Hike Ledger?
Yep.
All right, thanks. I just wanted to let, just to follow up on what we had talked about last month and let everyone know that the, the trail map, the townwide trail map made it into the Ledger Events Magazine. The, with like, you know, an article about it and also a description of like trails by difficulty, so with a couple huge ads on it, but made it in there. I also, and there's also a Hike Ledger program through Parks and Rec. It's more of like a pre-registration program. So I sent them some information to send out to everybody who registered for the program. So everyone who registered for the program and about, I think it was like two weeks ago, there was about 25 people who had registered. So everyone who registered is going to get like a link to the webpage that has all the trail maps on it as well as the, the same information that was in the Ledger Events Magazine, which is just like that list of hiking trails by difficulty and the townwide map. And also, you know, letting people know that more information will be available when the program officially launches. So just, that's an update on, on all of that. And then Karen Parkinson, if you're still listening, if you have GPS data of the Tri-Town Trail, could you also send that to me? And I might be able to have Liz like put that into the townwide trail map.
I think some of our members that are runners also have run it and had a copy, Kevin D. Flippo's on here too. He has a, that would be a GPS thing where runners have traced their whole map when they're running it. That's an interesting thing to post, right?
Yeah, I think I saw his. If he posted it in the Hike Ledger Facebook group, yeah, really cool.
We can get that to you.
All right, thank you, Kevin.
Sure.
Is that, is that GPS data that you have, just, is it from your smartphone, Ben?
Yep.
All right, thank you. Because I am, so with, with the data that we had Liz Crusher from CCOG work on, some of the data was from smartphones and that did require some more editing. And I kind of think that next year we'll have to do, or next year or sometime in the future, we might need, there's more, there's even more trails in Lead Your, so I wouldn't be surprised if in the future we like went back to CCOG and like did an update, so just thought that I want to put that out there.
Great.
That's all I got for now.
Alrighty. Then we'll move on to the next one, the off-leash trails.
Okay, it's not a, it's not an urgent matter. She and I were just exchanging some emails. And so I figured it'd be easier just to call, so it's not an urgent thing. Just tell her whenever she has.
Okay. It's not us. Thank you, Margaret.
Oh, okay.
She'll call you back later.
Okay.
Bye-bye.
Bye-bye.
Okay.
The leash ordinance in Legend allows us, if we so choose, to designate some trails under Legends, under the Conservation Commission's administrative control. We have four trails. I was thinking of the possibility of creating one at Whitehall and also at the the kettle hole. The reason why is because you'd have one at each side of the town. They also seem to be the trails that are least used. It'd be nice to have some more traffic on them to try to help keep maintaining them. So we need to decide whether we would like to do it and whether those are the ones that we designate and what rules that we would have for them. So I haven't opened any discussion.
Are there a lot of people pushing for this? Like, have we been asked to designate them?
I have not received anybody that's said that they want them designated, no. There were what, thirteen, fourteen trails in town? And so if you're looking at two of them, it's a very small amount.
You know, the correspondence we usually get, the wildlife magazine?
Yes.
So the July-August issue just came. And in it is an article about dogs on leashes in outdoor spaces and wildlife areas. And I think it might be just a source of more information as we go to look at where we might consider doing it and the rules that would apply. So I can send out an email with this attached to it. I just think it's an interesting article and right now as we're considering this, it might add some more information to our decision-making.
I see.
Go ahead.
See, I see no reason to rush and I agree with Roberta that some kind of assessment, if we were going to do it, some kind of assessment of which trails might be sensitive or, you know, like I don't feel like we've identified pros and cons. I think Mike made a good point about like, well, maybe we could draw more traffic to some underused trails, but there may be other pros and cons we're not thinking about, like which trails are safe for dogs. Mike, one concern I would have about the kettle hole is that the trail goes right along the road there, and so it's not, it's not really a great little segment for an off-leash animal. There may be other trails that go really close to, for example, somebody's property, you know, like I, I think before I, we would be really, really ready to choose some properties. I'd like to see us do more of an assessment of the pros and cons, both for like the pet's safety, impact on other users and other types of things.
Right. Burton Trail, I think would be off bounds only because of the simple reason that you have to cross town property to get there, and they're athletic fields, and dogs are banned pretty much by athletic fields. Also, if in the future it does get developed into a cross-country training ground, that would be problematic with everybody running down the road. The dog might decide to chase somebody. So Burton would be out. You know, let's see, what else do we have? Glacier, wow. You'd be having a bunch of dogs going to the vet, you know what I mean? So that was, so those are the only reasons I did those two. But the idea that perhaps we'd like to get this and everybody would like to do some more thinking, get some more ideas, that's perfectly fine with me. We don't have to take any action at this time. That seems to be fine with everybody. Have everybody come up with some ideas and stuff. So for the, for this evening here, we'll take no action on this particular agenda item. Alrighty. Okay. Is there any other old business? Oh, excuse me.
Quick follow-up question. Do we have, have we ever done an assessment of whether any of our properties have sensitive species of concern or anything like that? Has that kind of environmental assessment been done anytime recently on the property that we manage?
Not recently. There was one done a number of years ago on the Whitehall. And there was a copy of the assessment that's in our file in the town hall.
Just think that could be something to draw on if we had it for a number of properties.
Alright, I'll grab that thing and start looking through that, see if there's. Unfortunately, there's a lot of bases up there now. But the lower fields that were brush hogged last year, they're nothing but all goldenrod. They're really, like a sea of yellow goldenrod when I was up there. And unfortunately, I didn't see a single honeybee. I was shocked, but so be that.
Were, did you see any native bees?
No, no. Didn't see any, any of them. You know, I went plowing through one of the fields trying to get down to the Shoeville Brook to take a look down there and I didn't disturb anything or anybody.
On the, on the goldenrod? There aren't any bees to be on that. There aren't any bees. There aren't enough bees.
I couldn't hear that.
It's been a very poor year for them anyways, shit with the dro. I mean, out of the hives, I've got, I've got no honey. I'm just feeding them.
Same here, Michael.
May have had something to do with it. You know what I mean? Why we didn't see any down there. It might be no nectarum. I don't know. But anyways, is there any other old business coming before the commission?
I got that item, old business. Megan, again. I forgot to bring up the logo. So Hike Ledger logo I had passed out, I had emailed out four color versions of it and I could pull up on my screen. I'm tempted to do a share if I need to. Did everyone get a chance to look at those? And if so, do you have any feedback on what direction you think? I don't know, on, on what, what your thoughts are on any of the logo designs? Any thought from anyone?
I love the concept of the multi-season one, but I was a little concerned that it looks like the tree is dying.
Yeah. It's a good point.
Of the other ones, my favorite is the simplest one with just the blue sky and clouds in the background.
Okay, blue sky and clouds in the background. Carmen, who is not here, said she liked the Okay. Blue sky and clouds in the background. Um, Carmen, who is not here, said she liked the, the one with the colored stripes across the background. I think that, I don't know. I like that one too. I like the cloud one, but um, again, we'd love to hear more feedback from anyone. If anyone has any thoughts.
I actually like the one that stuck with the most blue. It had blue around the outside and um more blue in the patch. I just thought it fit with the blue that has been um added to most of the Ledyard signs and the Colonel Ledyard blue from the high school. And it seemed to fit with the colors that we've been trying to emphasize in other Ledyard projects.
Thanks for your, your comment. That makes me think of like, I, I feel like there's a, a darker blue associated with Ledyard, like the kernels. And I'm wondering, would you want to see like the, the that patch, like the version of it with the darker blue, like more similar to the colors on the signs around town?
I think, I think that kind of coordination would be good for the town to have uh, to keep up those kinds of, you look at something, you see the blue, you say, oh wow, that must have something to do with our town or something like that. Maybe that's not so, but this is just one more piece. And as we redo the signs and they will have blue on it. The trail patch having blue, I think coordinates it quite nicely.
Hey, I'll, I'll echo Molly and Roberta. I, I, I'd like the season one too, but I kind of said the same thing. Like, like the one half almost looked a little dead, maybe. Um, so I kind of agree with her on that. And then what Roberta brought up, you know, I'm looking at it right now, what we're talking about, and I can definitely see that. Um, I, I having that darker blue, I think would be really cool. I, I like that too. So I think those are two great points. So that's just my two cents.
All right. So I, and I think what I'll do is I'll, I'll take this feedback here and pass it back to Spencer. Um, he said, you know, he'll work on this line until it's as perfect as possible, you know, for what, what we want. So um, it's really good. So is there any more feedback that you guys want to pass along that would, that you would like me to pass along to the designer? No? All right. Well, thank you, everyone. I'll um pass along to Spencer and um, see what he can do with that feedback. Thank you.
Alrighty. New business. Uh, I'm gonna have to apologize for this one. The first item is the meeting schedule for calendar year 2021. And it slipped my mind and I didn't make one up. So I think we'll be no action on this and we'll have that for next week, next month. Alrighty, I apologize.
Well, I saw a list of dates included.
Oh, was it? Okay. Excuse me. I don't have the printed out one. I've got my note one. So, okay. So we do have.
Meeting scheduled for calendar year 2021 and it goes till January 2022. It was on the email that uh came for the, for the meeting tonight.
Okay, okay. I'm looking at my notes and not the, the original one. So uh, so that's a meeting schedule for next year. Uh, I make a motion that uh we approve this meeting schedule. Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor of this uh schedule next year?
Aye.
Aye. Alright, motion passes.
Cross it off your list, Mike.
Maybe I should put it on my list so I can cross it off. Alright, next item was discussion concerning the transfer of Founder's Preserve to Avalonia. Alright, Founder's Preserve is down there. Uh, it's between Colonel Diggit and Pumpkin Hill. It runs from one side to the other. I believe the southern border is on the uh the town line with Groton. Alright, it's ninety-six point two acres. There was a thirty-six lots subdivision supposed to go in there. They subdivided it. The developer ran out of money, fell behind in his taxes. The town took it in lieu of taxes. This is the uh, kind of like a two or three acre shallow pond, which is also a rookery for great blue herons. I think this year they counted nine nests in there. Alrighty. There is also the old, uh, the other name for it is the paint mill. There's the ruins in the sluice way from the old paint mill that used to be down there. There's also a number of historical cons, I guess they described them. They don't know whether Native American, some people feel that early colonial, you know, the root sellers. So there's a number of those. I think it was about three or four of them down there that I've seen. And they also have the old wells from the old days that are stone lined. So it has historical and ecological benefits. Currently, it is one of the two properties that the town allows bow hunting. Alrighty. It's a lottery, uh, only open to alleged residents. And I think this is the second or third year they've done it. If it was transferred to Avalonia, Avalonia, that's why I hope Julie was here. She could probably fill us in more. They are going to respect that during, it's the normal archery hunting season for deer under the state rules, regulations, everything like that, what is currently being done. Right now it's approved. The mayor has approved it. Land use has approved it. And I know some of the time counselors, you know, were uh, are in favor of it.
I thought there was a question, Mike, about uh separating off the house and the lot it's on from the rest of the property. Has that already been done or agreed to?
Yes, yes. That's been done.
Okay. So what I would like to do, and we can discuss it after I make a motion, is would Conservation Commission recommend or be in favor of transferring the uh Founder's Road Preserve to Avalonia? So I'll open it up to discussion. Land use and other people feel that Avalonia has uh the capabilities and resources to properly maintain it. And therefore their care would probably benefit the property a lot more than the town or the Conservation Commission. I mean, we have four trails and we we're struggling to keep them up to, you know. Is there any other ideas, comments, thoughts?
Well, I think the property is safer with Avalonia because if there was once a division considered to put a development on, that could come up again. And that will not happen if it's with Avalonia.
Right.
If it remains town property, there's always a possibility.
That was another point that was pointed, pointed out during land use. And I think the town feels that they would prefer to see it with Avalonia than to have another subdivision put in there. Also, what this does too is I've, if Tom is still here, is I believe that your western, your eastern green lane or greenway would actually come up and actually meet that piece of property. It's in the same vicinity. So that was one of the areas I told you of collaboration where, you know, there are different areas we could collaborate. And this would be an area that would be in Legend that would probably be able to link up with a greenway coming out of uh, uh Groton. Yeah.
Our, our, right now, we're, we've got greenbells proposed and swing into the state for the greenway approvals. We, it's back in last year, we had put in a greenway request to the state, but none of it was approved. There was no decision from the state. They didn't disapprove it. They didn't approve it. So we're still developing it. It's a, a, a large portion of our um uh process that we're looking at for next year in regard to how we're going to handle the ship of these various properties and integrate them into a continuous uh wildlife and passing, and people, passenger uh, traffic methodologies. Uh, but we are trying to go in the three different areas and, you know, western, central and, and eastern as far as trying to get up into Ledyard and linking up with your greenway in particular, because that's already state approved.
Uh, Mike, does this property fit into that uh federal wildlife uh area at the southern end of Ledyard?
Yes, it does. The uh, oh, what is it? The Great? Oh. Is it northeast? Excuse me, Tom. You probably know the name.
Yeah, it's the Great Thicket.
The Great Thicket. Yes, it does.
Okay. Um, I have a question. So I, do you know, would Avalonia be like making new trails or are there existing trails or um, do you know like where access would be? Cause right now, isn't there, I mean, the, the access is like off of paint mill, right? But that's like through private property. So is this some, it's, what do you mean?
No. That is a paint, is a pentway, but that pentway is owned by the town. That is town land. That is not a private road.
Okay.
You would have access to drive down all the way down the end of paint mill. It's a small area to park a couple of free cars down there. But no, that is a right, that is a uh town, town access.
That would be the main, where the main access is then, or the, the, yeah, okay.
Yes.
It's off of Pumpkin Hill. Yep.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Is there any further discussion? Alrighty, like I said, there's a motion on the table to uh approve. I'll give up a blessing to approve the transfer of the Founder's Preserve to Avalonia. Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 One, two, three.
Aye.
Alrighty. One, two, three, four, five, six, six, six ayes opposed? None. The, the motion carries. Alrighty. Alright, just a discussion here. Last item on here was the uh discussion concerned, you know, construction of the bog bridge at Burton Trail. I'm currently uh speaking with a gentleman. He's got twenty-five years CBs in the Navy. And he does, he's one of these gentlemen who likes to do smaller projects. If you're going to build an entire addition in your house, it's going to take more than three days. He doesn't want to talk to you. But he's more than a handyman. He'll come up and put a few cabinets up. He's kind of like when he's in betweens. It's difficult to find any carpenters that are willing to take on a project this small, especially when building is starting to pick up again. He's expressed an interest. We've looked at it. We've come up with a prelim, preliminary ideas for it. Alrighty. I'm still waiting for him. He's supposed to be giving me a, an estimate uh last Fri- last Friday. But I didn't receive it yet. So I'll be in contact with him again this weekend after, you know, none of the holidays passed.
You sent, you sent pictures out with two strips of boards. Um, have you revised that or changed it in any way? Cause people had some real issues with running on them.
Correct. Those are just examples of other ones that they've done. Alrighty. I mean, if you go online and you plug in bog bridges, get images, you'll see hundreds of different ones and different ways of constructing them.
Okay.
You know what I mean? I was envisioning it being about twenty to twenty-four inches wide. It's not going to be a plank like this. It's going to be, you know, you'd be able to, you'd be single filing, but you'd be able to run across it.
Okay.
Twelve by ten, twelve by two, two, two by ten, two by twelve, planking with sufficient support underneath it, they're not gonna, you're not gonna bounce.
The people who had expressed that concern weren't here, so I thought we should at least say that it wasn't going to be what pictures like you sent us.
It's going to be very similar, very similar. It's the same concept. I don't know what the bog bridge looks up in Pine. Molly, what's, does that look like?
Well, we've talked about it in this group before. I, there's like some, they're not standard bog bridges, those, they're not um the ones I'm thinking of are the big ones like on the, along the power access.
Oh, alright.
There are, I think there are some other bog bridges that are more typical up there, but um I haven't walked that way recently. So I don't remember versus.
I'm also looking at uh potential cost. We know that, you know, all of that material have got to be puffed down there. And it's about a half, quarter of a mile down just to the uh construction site. And to build something similar to the one we did before, I don't know if we have it in our budget. So I'm trying to think of something in between that, you know, is doable. Does not mean that if they decide to expand that into a cross-country training, it's possibly, you know, a, another one could be put up next to it, or you could add to it. You know what I mean? But for the present time, with our present plans, I'm figuring this is probably the best solution to that. And especially now when it's the dry season. And I think we measured it out. It's probably about a hundred. We, we thought it was a hundred feet. It's about a hundred and twenty feet.
Well, if more can get added to it at a later time, it might be worth it to spend some of our money now and as you've said, get something in place and then work on addition to it later. And we might have more money later.
It's possible. Or, you know, you know, that's, a cross-country teams may renew their interest again.
Right.
In the future.
This is Mary. Um, do you need to get any kind of a permit or an okay from the town since that's town property? The bridge? Or are you, is it a replacement for one that fell down?
No, this would be an original and I do believe that I'll have to go before and, and get a permit for it, yes.
Okay. The reason I ask is I was just thinking about the problems that the tri-town trail is having, trying to do a bridge. And I was just wondering if, you know, you had the town's blessing before you took all that trouble.
They say it's better to ask for forgiveness than permission, but no. No, I, I, I understood that. There's a very real possibility I would have to.
Okay, okay.
And speak to that, yes. If there's any more discussions, ideas, thoughts?
Um, my, my thought is, is, you know, you also want to consider long-term. I guess, and then, and design, I think the simpler design gives you better ability, I would think, to repair if something ever happened. Um, I don't know if that's, you know, another consideration anyway.
Yes, it could be because it is a wet area and some parts of the bridge are going to remain wet for a good part, moist for a good part of the year. They will decay. Alrighty, you probably are looking at maybe ten years, but the other planking that is above it probably will have a longer lifespan. So you may only have to replace sections of the supports underneath it because they'd be constant, constant contact with uh, with moisture is what I'm thinking. Yes, that's part. It's a good idea.
Well, if you don't pursue it, we will never have an idea what it costs or how it will uh solve the problem of using that trail. So I think it's good to go ahead with it while it's dry, then uh keep delaying.
Right. He said, how soon did you want it? And I said, before the ground freezes. So we probably got another probably two months at least.
Yep.
And I'll make sure I get a PO first.
Thank you.
Is there any new business anybody quite to discuss? No? And I would like to make a, well, first of all, I'd like to uh thank Beatrice and Karen, Kevin and Tom this evening for coming up. Please feel free to come back at any time. And then I would make a motion for adjournment.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Six in favor, opposed? Motion carries. Alrighty.
Good night.
Good night, all.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Bye-bye.
Bye.